Okay, well, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to this work session of the Code of Word of Education. Ms. Logan, will you please call Pearl?
This is Asper. Here. This is O'Farrell. Here. Mr. Pearl.
Here.
This is Schaefer. Here. Mr. Lowell.
Here. Mr. Pearl, there you go. Double check your mics on. Appreciate that. All right, great. If you wouldn't mind, please stand in for the closing of the engines. I declare the engines to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, and with the law of the liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, I think.
That's my mother.
All right, all right.
Put just one word up.
No, no worries, no worries. Can we go ahead and just do the treasuries report and then do the open and then do the vote? Oh, she's walking in now?
She's walking in now.
Okay. The rule with the punches, it's all good. We can make this work. It works.
I was just saying about her. How beautiful she is.
All right. Well, this moves us on to, look at that, welcome, welcome. This moves us to the oath of office for Mr. Michael Pearl for the Board of Education.
Mr. Pearl, would you please rise? Mr. Pearl, during the last board meeting on September 14th, 2020, you were appointed by unanimous votes to fill the unexpired term of the recently made infirmity. I have the honor to administer the oath of office to make this all official. So I run toward you. You don't have to repeat. You got the meaning. And I'm going to read it all. And then you're going to answer if you agree with I do, okay? Please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Lakota Locust District, Butler County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws, now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance and set office and until your successor is elected and qualified? If you agree, please say "I do."
I do.
Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
Can you give a socially distant picture of us up here, is that possible, while we're rehearsing? All right. Well, trying to do it for a table to stagger.
I was worried that was a poor. Staggered though. So you normally have a number, I was like, is that really, that's too many?
Oh, that's what I said.
Hi, Jenny. Come on, Jenny.
Come on up.
Come on.
A wide lens here.
Hey.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very grateful.
We'll get another picture where we can stand next to each other and put a picture for the other one ones. Okay, fantastic. So this moves us on to the next part of our agenda, which is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of them. Same.
Ms. Logan will call, please.
This is Schaefer.
Yes.
This is O'Farrell.
Yes.
This is Asper.
Yes.
Mr. Pearl.
Yes.
Mr. Lowell.
Yes.
Next up is treasurer's recommendations. Mrs. Logan?
So tonight, we need to approve permanent appropriations. You have an official resolution, which is the formal part of what we need to do now with the CDOs. And then you also have a copy of a slideshow. I'm back over the slideshow up there. We're going to do old school and we're going to do it by paper. The slideshow will be on Zoom and there are extra copies in the back if anybody has a copy of the slideshow. Just to kind of talk a little bit about what appropriations are. If you think about it in really common terms, it's our budget. So tonight, we are approving the budget for fiscal year 2021. We did approve temporary appropriations at our June 29 meeting. The end of our fiscal year is June 30th. So before we can spend any money in the following fiscal year, we have to approve at least temporary appropriations. And then you have to approve those before October 1st. Permanents have to be in place by October 1st. I also want to say this year, I mean, permanent appropriations is a little misleading. There are still so many things that are in flux this year. And as the CFO of this district, it really drives me crazy that things are not as firm and in place. But it's 2020 and it's no different with our budget. The overview of the request. By board policy, we approve our appropriations at the fund and object level. So what that means is we have several different funds, which is going to be like our general operating fund, our food service fund, our athletic fund. And then the object level is going to be the things like salaries, that's an object. Benefits is an object. Capital outlay. So that's the detail and how we approve our appropriations. The next page, when we get to that detail, it's going to give you the recap of each one of the funds that you're approving tonight. And our main fund that we talk about, which is 83% of the overall budget, is our general operating fund. And I will say, last year, when you approved permanent appropriations, it was 83% funded. So it's pretty consistent. You're going to see some new funds, though, on this list. 507, ESSCR and CRF. Those are the Corona relief fund and the elementary and secondary. I'm trying to remember the exact words. 507. Elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. So these are the Corona relief monies that we've obtained. So those are two funds that you're not used to seeing on this report that we'll see this year. The recap by fund and object is the next page. And so this is how you're actually adopting the appropriations. And that's going to match up with the technical piece. The only thing, though, that you're not going to see on this recap, there is a fund, 022. It is basically a growth rate fund. And the reason why I don't put it on here is because I think it's misleading. That fund is used for us as a reconciliation fund for our benefits, for healthcare, for dental. So what we do is we already expend the money, like, for healthcare. Those expenditures are included in here. We put it into this fund and then it's a reconciliation. So it's received it in and then expensed out again. So if I show it here, it's like a double when you're looking at it overall. So that's why it's not included here, but it is included in the appropriation resolution. I like graphs. I think pictures kind of show something a little bit differently. So all you're going to see here are a few pie charts to just kind of show the appropriations by fund, again, that 83%. We've also noted a few of the other larger funds that we appropriate. Our permanent improvement fund, our bond retirement fund, which is where we pay our debt, and the food service fund. The next chart, the next pie graph, is taking a look at those objects. And a lot of times, the question I get is, well, out of everything, how much are you spending once salaries and benefits? That's the big question I get. With all funds, if you add the two, it's 68%. The next page will show you even further down into detail when we drill into the general fund. The general fund, that salary and benefit is 73%. That's holding pretty steady to where we were. If you look at actuals after the past 20 years, you're right there at the 73%. So we do keep our eye on that to make sure that that's not traveling, you know, too high. But I will tell you, in my position, and when I talk to colleagues, as long as this is no more than 85%, they feel like they're doing a good job. So this is a really good presentation. The next page, I wanted to kind of talk a little bit about what is the impact to us with the coronavirus? Everybody's feeling it personally, but how is this impacting us financially at the district level? So last year, we did get cut to our state foundation monies, which equated to 7% of that line item at $3.4 million. We got that cut in the day of last year. This year, we've been told, we're getting the first initial cut is the same that we got last year. There's no guarantees that there will not be more cuts, but there have been also in that same thing, no one has said that we will get another cut. So, but, very present then, because we got it in the 11th month last fiscal year. So this is what we know right now. Again, it's a work in progress. I can't tell you, though, on the state level, revenues have been coming in above estimates. So that's favorable. The other good news I'd like to share, if you can, our first real estate settlement, we received this past month. And it came in better than what we expected. The delinquencies were not there that we were estimating. So that's good news. The other good news, as I mentioned, we have gotten some federal money that has flowed down to us. The ESSCR, 1.3 million. And a Corona relief fund of just under 800,000. And then with Mr. Wesley's help, we did apply and receive a broadband Ohio connectivity grant of the center of 145,000. So with all of those new federal monies, that's 2.3 million dollars. So that helps. It helps fill the hole. But it doesn't completely fill the hole. We're still at a net loss of 4.5 million dollars overall when we look at that. So that's kind of what our impact is. The other thing I want to point out is two of these funds, the Corona relief fund and the broadband Ohio connectivity grant, we have to spend those out by the end of December. So it's a very fast-moving grant period of time. I don't ever remember getting a grant that expired that quickly in my career. So right now, we are really looking through everything to find out what is the best way, what are those items that we can best move from our general fund, basically, and instead of spending general fund money, move it into these funds. But we're also looking at the time involved here, too. The other fund, the ESSCR, we have more time with that. That goes all the way this time in 2022. We'll have that spent by the end of this year, I guarantee you. We won't need to wait. The next page, these are things that are on my mind. Our extracurriculars. We know that we are having a season. We're having a fall season. And that's great. But our gate receipts average about $400,000 a year. And what we have been told is to count on about 15% maximum capacity. So if you take that $60,000, so that's about $340,000 plus than what we usually get. Our participation fees, and this includes our marching band and our athletics, average about $635,000. Will we have each one of the seasons this year? We don't know. We're in fall. And great, but as the year moves along, we'll analyze that and see what impact participation has had in each season. So we're keeping our eye on that. We have tightened the budget. And you'll see a dollar figure there. But I will tell you, Chris Bissarch spoke about that this week and said, you know, they are really looking at every area where they can tighten that budget. But we do a general fund transfer each year to help support our extracurriculars to about $1.8 million. I don't know if we'll need to do more at this point. I'm not sure. But I'm just putting it out there as a conversation piece to let you know we're looking at this. It's on my mind. It's on all of our minds. So just putting it out there. As we do more, we'll talk about it more. School fees, I am recommending that we waive our consumable school fee this year. And here's why. The total amount is between $500,000 and $600,000. To collect that money, well, I think one thing right now, I think anytime our community members, our parents can have a little bit more money in their pocket to help with things is a good thing. But to collect this money, and if something happens and we're not able to utilize all the supplies like we did last year, and then we have to turn around and do refunds, there's a lot of soft costs involved in that. And I want to make sure that I'm doing the right thing by the people. And sometimes with refunds, they're complicated. So I'd rather stay away from that. We do have some cash on hand in that consumable fund of about $70,000 that could help offset this. And we do have some federal, as we talked about, we've got some federal stimulus money that we could look at as well as real re-allocation of expenses. We have a large general fund budget. We spend half a million dollars a day. So this is lots than one day's expenditure that we didn't be talking about. And I believe that we can find it to take care of that. So that would be my recommendation, is to waive consumable fees. Next page, I still think it's important for us to talk about where we are as a district and why we are going to be able to weather the storm and why that's not keeping me up at night. We ended last fiscal year with $104.7 million cash, which equates to about 207 days or seven months. Our board policy says that we will maintain at least three months. So we were sitting at more than double that. And we set up the rainy day fund. So we've got a balance in there of $4.3 million right now. And next month, I'm going to talk to you about, do we want to transfer more into that fund based on where we were last year? Or would we rather keep it in our fund balance? So we're going to have that discussion next month. But I think it's important to say that, that there was a lot of work that went into getting the district where it is financially. And all that work is not paying off for this community. There's a lot of school districts that are not in this good of financial shape. And they are really, really stressed about this part. And so I think that's one thing when the secretary, when we talk about doing certain things, things that we need to do for the students, you know, we're not looking at a running out of cash like some of the districts are. And in summary, again, you're approving the permanent appropriations this month. We can modify those throughout the year. And then in November, I will bring forward a five-year forecast for you to consider. And we'll know more then than we do now. But I really think this will be one of those years where we're going to see more changes than what we're seeing typically. So that's it. Questions?
Jenny, I have a question. First of all, thank you. I appreciate it. Okay. The federal grant money that we see, are there, are hands tied on how we've made that?
There are restrictions on how we can spend that money. The one with less restrictions is the one that also has a longer timeline.
That's the bigger one, right?
Last one. That one can be spent, I mean, that one, you ought to ask a lot of questions. What about this one? We could even use some of those funds to help with our athletic and marching band to help those funds. So there are things that we could use that money for that the other two we cannot. The connectivity grant, it is very restricted. And so that one, it's exactly what it sounds like. The other one, though, has to be spent on things that you, expenses that you were not anticipating and did not budget for that are Corona-related.
Cleaning, more cleaning supplies.
PPE, yes. But one of the other items, too, is we've got a homegrown curriculum for online. That was definitely the result of this. And so that expenditure and building that is also something that is an allowable expense for that. So that's it.
That's a good question, but I do have a comment on the consumable fee. You know, I appreciate you taking the time to kind of talk through that and for your statement about the soft costs associated with it. Because I think a lot of times we look at our numbers where we often don't really consider the soft costs associated with some of the decisions that we're making. I think that my statement that I'd make is that while I think that that's the right move for you to make or for the department to make, or the district to make, I just want, you know, in the midst of free lunches through December, I've heard a lot of people say, but I can pay. Why wouldn't I pay, right? Like, if I have that ability to pay, I'd rather pay so that there's not a burden somewhere else. And I make that statement because I also recognize their families that it is a hardship and it is a burden. And so all I'm saying is that as we do this, we make this, you know, we weigh this bait, that somehow we can just articulate in some way, shape or form, the reason we're doing it and why we're doing it. And that it actually can cost us more on the back end if we went forward with it. So I just think that's an important thing for the community to hear at some level.
Absolutely. And I also think, you know, Adam and I met today with one of the one of the presidents of Miss Hopewell Junior High, their PTO, and talking about fundraising. You know, it's challenging to try to figure out fundraising in this environment as well. And so they are really trying to think outside the box and how to help their schools in different ways. The one thing I would say is, if people have those funds, they can support their schooling in many ways.
Absolutely.
Through their PTOs, through different fundraising events. So there's different ways to do it. It doesn't have to be through a consumable chain.
I completely agree with you. It'd be great to have some messaging around just what you said there, too. Again, I do. I think there are people that are willing to give back and have the opportunity to give back right now. And there are obviously people that aren't. And so it's really hard to tailor to 17,000. But, you know, just being able to identify that people are across the spectrum there. But I completely understand what you're saying as well. Thank you.
Mentioned the school lunches. I was going to ask how that sort of fit into this, the new school. Like, the routine, there's a federal program that's helping from that. How does that fit into this?
So that's one of those things that I will say, Julie, that's kind of in flux. When we ended last year with our food service fund, it did take a hit. But just like our general fund, there's been great management there. And so we're able to weather some storms. I, we're still analyzing what that is going to entirely look like. Because when you get reimbursement, it doesn't necessarily pay 100% of the cost. So there's, there's an offset there. So we're working through that. And that's something I could bring forward maybe next month or one of the following months and just specifically talk about the food service fund. Because I think that's another area that we need to recap.
I have several questions and comments. Michael, this is what's now is jumping out both feet, so. You don't have to go even till the next meeting. Totally, you're right. Jenny, you had said state revenues are running higher than expected. But where are they in terms of a typical year? Are they still lower than normal?
So we had, we have estimated that we would see a 10% cut in state revenue. And we've seen a 7% cut. So it's better, it's better than we anticipated.
But it's still not in normalcy.
No.
Which gives us an indication that there may be further cuts in our state funding this year.
Anything is possible.
I think we've made the right decision in terms of student opportunities. I think that's really important for, like I said before, giving kids as typical of an experience as we can. And I appreciate that. And I recognize that's going to be a hit in our budget that we need to adjust for. Do you think the priority of offering those is, is an important priority for our students? I'm going to suggest that you post this document along with this document on board docs so that our community can see kind of a better breakdown. It makes us more understandable. In terms of the consumables, I appreciate the point that Mr. Lowell has made. I think I'm comfortable with agreeing to that as long as I can see the reallocation and where that's coming from. I'm with the reallocation as opposed to the spending. And appreciate that you're trying to do that for our families. So I'm going to ask you before the meeting, and I really appreciate getting the revenue associated with COVID and how that all breaks down. And I'm going to ask, and just wanted to clarify that we are going to see how the cost of revenue for everything. And I know that it's heavily targeted and expect that we'll see that sometime next month, perhaps before the November forecast.
When we start talking about the draft forecast is when I'll have all those details. And we're working on that now. Honestly, the private forecast is something that never really goes away for us. But when we talk about that draft, we'll talk about it in one board meeting, we'll talk about it, go over it. Then the next board meeting, I'll ask you to approve it. So we'll be able to look at it in more detail.
And I appreciate that. That would really help. Just a need of revenue, basic building, offset the future. So at the same time, we had talked before, I just wanted to make sure that we improved it as well in that same conversation, getting our budget back to a balanced state and what we need to do in order to do. we need to do in order to do that. So we appreciate seeing those suggestions from both of you as well. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you for the good one.
Thanks so much. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the permanent appropriations?
I'll move.
Slogen?
Mrs. Kasper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
This brings us to our public comment portion of the evening. Just a reminder that this is, you know, allocated 45 minutes, three minutes per individual speaker. They have no emails, I don't believe, that were submitted for the comment. We'll next take in-person comments if anybody's wanting to speak. Just a reminder, you need to say your name and your address. Do we have anybody in person? Hey, seeing none. Mr. Zink, do we have anybody on Zoom? Hey, nobody on Zoom? That moves us to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, Mr. Miller wanted to speak, and he reminded me three times. I told him I would forget it.
I know there was excitement in the room.
I was watching the clock, I was watching the clock.
I will, I will try to look fast, but this is important for the district. We are finishing up our sixth week of in-person learning. There are many people, teachers and the parents who are faithful in us. I don't think a lot of people thought we would make it this far. Maybe some of us in this room even had our doubts on occasion, but I think one of the reasons we were ever doing that is because we've been very vigilant about masks and social distancing and cleaning. And so with that being said, executive team met today, and we were talking about the election process, and most, nearly all of our schools are used as polling places. And so one of the ways we've been able, I think, to stay in-person learning or offer in-person learning is we haven't had people in the public coming into our buildings. Well, with the election, we're going to have a lot of people coming into our buildings, and that's a PD day, kids aren't in section that day anyway. But because of that, I think it makes a lot of sense if we use part of Tuesday and all of Wednesday for a deep cleaning of our facilities, just because we're in this COVID time, and also because we're going to have literally tens of thousands of people coming through our school buildings. So what we're going to do as a district is a PD day for our staff, that's usually on Election Day. We're going to move that to Monday, which would be November 2nd. So that'll be our PD day for staff. Kids don't report, so they'll essentially have a three-day weekend. And then we're going to use Election Day, Tuesday, the 3rd, and Wednesday, the 4th, as remote learning days for our students, for the whole district. So students won't be coming to school, our staff won't be reporting. It gives us the time to participate in the election process on Tuesday, but for our purposes, give us a chance to really clean the buildings and our facilities so that we can stay for the long term, hopefully, within-person learning. So it'll be a little bit of an adjustment, we're going to notify staff out here tonight or tomorrow morning, and then we'll put something out to our parents and community after that. I think it makes a lot of sense for us because we're in this for the long haul, and hopefully this helps us achieve that.
For those who don't know, PD is?
Perfectional Development, which is a regularly scheduled, thank you, regularly scheduled event that happens in our district on Election Tuesday. So we have PD on Monday and the 2nd, remote learning for all of our students on the 3rd and 4th, so Tuesday, Wednesday, and back on Thursday, those are for those that are participating in person. Good?
Excellent, yeah.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you to all of our community churches, and thank you to all of us, and really appreciate that outreach, it's nice to hear positive things. And also thank you, Mr. Pearl, for stepping up to the plate. It's a challenging job, but I think that you have a lot to the table, and really have the happy things.
Thank all of you for all.
Welcome, welcome. All right, so that moves us to adjournment. Mr. Miller, you didn't have anything else you wanted to say, all right? I do have a motion to adjourn.
So, is that it?
Fantastic. Ms. Logan?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Kasper?
Yes.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Mr. Pearl, welcome again, and we'll see each other.
So much love.
October 12th.
See you.